Okay, it's 5:00 on Monday, May the 16th, and we'll call this regular city council meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone. Everyone to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Thank you. We do have everyone here today. So entertain a motion then to approve today's agenda with one amendment. Agenda item number 21 with BRAC. We do have a representative here, and we would like to move her up to number 16. So we'll just invert number 16 and 21, and that way also then we can talk about RAG-BRI all together. So.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. I'd like to thank our videographer this evening. Riker Brindley is with us again this week. And I've been asked to read the following proclamation proclaiming May as official Motorcycle Awareness Month in Algonah. So whereas the people of Algonah have an enduring regard for the preservation of life on our highways, and whereas Motorcycle Awareness Month is being observed throughout the nation, and whereas all motorcycle organizations, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway officials in our state should join with the Iowa Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau and Debate of Iowa in actively promoting safe operation, increased rider training, improved licensing efforts, and motorist awareness, and whereas during this month and all months, all highway users should unite in safe sharing of roadways throughout the state of Iowa, and whereas Motorcycle Awareness Month provides citizens of Iowa opportunity to commit themselves to being more alert and aware of other motor vehicle drivers, and especially those operating motorcycles. Now therefore, I, Rick Murphy, Mayor of the City of Algonah in the state of Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Motorcycle Awareness Month in Iowa, and urge all motor vehicle operators to join in this effort to keep our highway safe and start seeing motorcycles. And having ridden a motorcycle for 40 years, I think this is a very timely proclamation. So, thank you very much. Any council members have anything they would like to share? Okay, hearing done. Move to agenda item number six, an update from the city administrator.
Coming up here on Wednesday, June 8th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Carnegie Bond, we'll be hosting a design team from the Community Visioning Program that will participate in this year. So it'll be a landscape architect from Ivy State University, as well as a few interns reviewing project goals, having some concept design boards there, and keep that in the public. So it coincides with the first party in park event, though the design workshop starts a little earlier, so get us from 4:00 to 7:00. In case of poor weather, we'll be moving that to City Hall. So I think it'll be a great opportunity for what people are out and about to see and provide a reaction on ideas on some of the transportation and landscaping improvements that we're going to be working on with the Community Visioning Project.
And then today, we had our pre-construction meeting for the South Park Pickleball Court Project. Just want to provide an update to everyone on where that project stands. So, Burpleen's is the general contractor on the project. They expect to start work next week. And then come May 31st, after Memorial Day weekend, we'll be closing down the westernmost tennis court. The east court will stay open. People will still be able to use that, but that one will be closed, so we can start the fence removal, as well as the tying into the existing tennis court project on that. And that will remain closed until the fence is back up and rated open, which we anticipate will be sometime in August. So that one court will remain open as we offer people to use. But starting here in June, that western court will be closed to facilitate construction, so we can go from, we'll have to have one court in the short term, but at the end, we'll end up with four. So we'll be getting more announcements on that here coming up this week.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Jacob. Agenda item number seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak here? Okay, seeing none, we will move then to the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from the May 2nd work session and regular session, approve a Class E liquor license to Chib LLC, approve a Class C liquor license to the Cassuth County VFW, post number 2541, approve a Class E liquor license to Fairway Stores Incorporated, number 531, approve the bills to be paid this cycle, approve the department reports, as well as approving the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met, and approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. It's 5:06, and we will move to agenda item number nine, which is an open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2021-22 budget amendment.
All right. This is the first budget amendment to the current fiscal year FY 2022, which ends here on June 30th. The changes in the budget, it's an increase of $2,739,240 in total revenues. The source of those changes are from DOT grant reimbursement from North Main Street, receiving the Wellmark grant for Central Park, and then the city's receipt of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. There is also $1,174,540, which represents reimbursement from AMU for street projects, as well as DOT grant for Snap on Drive, and then $100,000, which is a correction needed on the state budget forms and other financing sources. Again, for total revenue changes of $2,739,240. And expenditures on debt service, it is an increase of $342,850 to fix some numbers from when we did refinancing on the 2021A and 2021B loans, as well as payments from the townships for their share of the World Pumper Truck purchase. And then we have a decrease of $1,162,728, which are funds that have been budgeted for the reconstruction of North McCoy Street, which will obviously be happy now in FY '23. And so total changes in expenditures are decreased by $819,878. We have not received any comments or questions since the hearing notice was published.
Okay. And is there anyone here that would like to speak on that? Okay, hearing done. It's 5:09, and we will close that public hearing. And again, it's 5:09, and we will move to agenda item number 10, which is a public hearing concerning the airport hangar door replacement.
This is a public hearing of a proposed 2022 airport hangar door replacement project. The estimate prepared by Boltman-Mink, the airport engineer, for the cost of construction for the replacement, $75,000. We have not received any public comments regarding this hearing notice.
Okay. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on that? Okay, hearing done. It's 5:10, and we will close that public hearing. We will move then to new business, agenda item number 11, and this is the third reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map.
This amends the zoning classification of the property mainly west of Hardests Mutual on Highway 18 to the north there, from agricultural to highway service business district.
Motion to waive the third reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don, to waive the third reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the third reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Then motion to adopt the ordinance amending official zoning map.
Okay, we have a motion and a second then to adopt. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Don.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 12, this is the third reading also of an ordinance amending the Algonah zoning map.
This ordinance proves a planned residential unit development of PRUD overlay district on a property on the corner of Finn Drive and Spruce Street. The property is currently zoned RM4, which is a multifamily. What the overlay district will allow for is flexibility within that site on the placement of the buildings, as long as they adhere to the underlying zoning district's setback requirements to adjacent uses. The council approved the conceptual development plan for the zoning request on April 18th, and it will be to develop a three attached single-family units, or triplex townhome structures, with zero foot setbacks on the lot lines within the PRUD overlay. This is the third reading.
I'll move to waive the third reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Tyler, to waive the third reading. Any discussion? Hearing done. Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the third reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney. Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 13, this is an ordinance pertaining to no parking areas and temporary stop signs. This is the second reading.
This ordinance makes a number of changes to where temporary stop signs are allowed for school zones, removes a number of the stop signs that had been authorized by code for Obelang schools when there was still a school building there. It removes those, as well as a couple of stop signs where there's now a stoplight or the sign is not used. It also authorizes placement of temporary stop signs that the schools are currently, or I should say have been using, but this formalizes them and gets them in our city code. And then amends some parking areas in some of these school zones, just to provide better spacing with in terms of intersections in the stop signs of not allowing parking in certain areas. I'm happy to answer any specific questions regarding the several changes to the ordinance sections.
I had a question on the stop signs that start 45 minutes before and after the school, before and after the school day, and also shall be in place 45 minutes before and after a school event. What are we considering a school event, or I mean, if it's a varsity basketball game, is that it's going to be on all night long through the end of the varsity game? Or I'm just curious what we're going to consider that being at the school event?
Yeah, they will be. We wrote this the same way the DOT is giving them permission to like the sign on Highway 169, 45 minutes before school, 45 minutes after school, and then during the school event, before and after. Now, during the event, no, it should come out. The problem is, is there's a lot of traffic to and from games a lot of times, and I guess maybe we need to clarify that. But I had the assumption, if they are during the event, that the way they have it written, there might be question on that.
I was just wondering if that was going to be excessive if we, you know, is it just certain events that are going to draw a certain crowd to versus, you know, what event that there is? It depends what the event is too, and how busy it's going to be and that kind of stuff. I just didn't know if we need to work that out a little bit closer and see what the inside says.
I guess, you know, the only way we could really clarify that is list each event that they have, and which ones are acceptable and which ones aren't. I don't know how we would go about doing that besides listing each individual one. The elementary schools, I look at it as like parent teacher conference times, that's about the only, or maybe school programs, but they have those at the Performing Arts Center now. So high school would be most of the time, most of the events.
I just didn't know if that was going to be every day, if, you know, we're not including practices.
No, practices and that, but it just basketball games, football games, track meets, you know, events like that, things at Performing Arts Center, what's going on at the School District plus state.
Moved to waive the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the second reading. Any discussion?
The only question here is, Paul, if something needs to be clarified here, that can still be done before the third reading, correct?
Well, usually you do the clarification at the second reading, to be honest, okay? And I probably couldn't clarify before the third reading, I mean, drawing and make a change. We may have to have some language about being a second reading and maybe a third reading or something like that. Or this should be, you know, considered a second reading and then, you know, you wait, because we, you know, with a unanimous vote, we can wait the third reading. So if we were to change it, we may label that the second reading.
Yeah.
And then decide, okay, we'll call this the second reading, and then we'll waive the third reading. And maybe, I don't know how important it is to school to get this adopted by, I mean, it's waited now till we're in May already, so.
The main thing is no parking stuff, so they can get the actual painting for the bus pickup at Bryant done correctly and those kind of things. So we needed that by summer for the janitors, but it's not in emergency.
Well, it might be difficult to enumerate every single event that might happen. What we could do is just kind of administrative function is have just a written understanding with the schools that this is our, you know, understanding of what qualifies as an event, you know, and then other events as, you know, if they have, you know, I don't know what type of event they might have, if they don't have right now, but down the road, you know, something might come up where they're hosting an event or something, you know, we could define that out, if this is how we're interpreting what specialty that means for invitation purposes.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that could be clarified myself, but I'm just suggesting that if somebody comes up with a great idea the next two weeks, you know, it could be edited.
Well, again, as defined in the school calendar, there are events where all listed on the school, while they don't give out a school calendar anymore, but online in the school calendar, there are events where all scheduled on there.
I would think a certain amount of school discretion is going to be accepted here.
As I said, is the school the one that decides when those go out?
Yeah.
Well, I'd say we could have just an understanding of this is what's meant by event. So, I mean, because the intent isn't that whenever there's a practice going on at the school, that is considered an event. So for the sake of clarity, we can just kind of have this is what's meant by event.
And I think that's fair. I just heard a number of frustrated people that are.
They're out a little more than what they're supposed to be, and I'm working with Joe Carter to get that corrected, because sometimes the janitors at elementary schools are not taking the signs in. They're out all night, 3:00 along Sample Street, and sometimes they're out all night. Whenever someone reports that to me, I'm like, Joe, they're out again, we can't have this. And it's kind of a learning curve now that we're starting to enforce this, that the janitors have to make sure it's only good to be at those signs taken down. As far as the electronic stop signs, they're working, there was a piece they can add to their electronic stop signs to make the Wi-Fi, so they can do it from home. They do not want to buy that piece, but Joe said beginning next year, when it's late starts early hours, whatever, the electronic stop signs will be adjusted to those times. Somebody actually has to go up there, plug a keyboard into the sign and inform him the sign for a different tone. Then he said that would start next week.
Okay, where were we, Deb?
Motion.
Did, we have a motion and a second to waive the second reading.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried then to waive that second reading.
Moved to accept or approve the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Rodney, then to approve the second reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number 14, and this is an ordinance concerning bicycle licensing in Algonah.
This is part of our effort to go through and clean up some of our code sections. This is a section that has, I don't know when's the last time it was ever enforced, but technically right now under our law of chapter 1056, anyone that's going to be riding a bicycle on a sidewalk, or on a street, or on a trail is supposed to have a license from the chief of police and to display said license. So this ordinance repeals that entire section of code, so that's no longer technically on books.
And that's okay, both?
Yes.
Move to waive the first reading on that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to waive the first reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to approve the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 15, this is an ordinance concerning fireworks permits.
In April, the governor signed a new law which went to effect immediately, intending to have counties and cities regulate the sale of consumer fireworks, and in short, it prohibits cities from regulating fireworks sales in any commercial or industrial district at all. If it's, of course, there's a lot of there, they can be sold. Our current ordinance prohibits sale of fireworks in our downtown zoning district, as well as within 300 feet of a residential property. In order to bring our ordinance into the performance of the new state law, we replaced that section, just stating that sale of fireworks may not occur if any of the non-commercial or industrial districts that we have, so that'd be residential, multifamily, conservation, ag, and blah blah. And we have those considered first, second, and third reading all in one meeting, because it's just a kind of compliance of the state law, which we have, you know, the current ordinance we have on the books, we can enforce. So we're still compliant, but just so our ordinance matches the state, it's nice to get it cleaned up.
I'm just curious, is this powerful fireworks lobby down at the state bringing issues like this up, that they make minor changes like this, that I guess, I just think this is kind of silly that the state legislature is messing with this?
Well, when this fireworks ordinance first came out, there were cities that were regulating them, that they could only be sold in the back acre of a heavy industrial park, and so I think this is just to clean up, no, you can't do that. What scares me is they can be sold right next to a gas station, they can be sold downtown in our business district now, and we can't do anything about it.
Yeah, you don't think that's likely, because we're used to them being sold in tents, but I imagine they could be sold in an empty building. If something would be empty downtown, there'd be nothing to stop it now. That's, yeah.
Yeah, we certainly prefer local control on these items, although we'll never have that authority when it comes to fireworks.
Yeah. So I'd entertain a motion then to waive the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don, to waive the first reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve first reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don, to approve the first reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can I do second and third together?
Yeah, you can waive the second and third.
Yeah, motion to waive the second and third readings.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don, to waive the second and third reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve second and third readings.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the second and third reading. Vote, please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to adopt the state ordinance. I mean.
Yeah, basically.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance, uh, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay, we'll move then, and this is where we want to amend the agenda and move, uh, Jenna, item number twenty-one up to, uh, which concerns BRAC, move it up to this time slot. And Amy, would you like to?
All right, good evening. I'm Amy Whitaker, I'm here representing the Algonah Rotary BRAC Bike for Kids Committee, uh, looking for your council's notification and approval of this event. It's going to take place on Saturday, June fourth, and it'll start at the YMCA parking lot. Uh, we will go, um, behind the YMCA, down through Teats Park, and then head out, been dry, little bit of stint on Highway eighteen just to get over to Plum Creek Road and go out to Oak Lake. Uh, we'll go to Burt and then backtrack, come back, go to Titanka. And then anyone who is still riding at that point, uh, will just come back down the same route and without going to Burt again, they'll just follow the route back to town.
Okay, that little stretch where they have to go on eighteen. One thing I've suggested in the past and think maybe we ought to consider some here is right along there, there's a frontage road with some homes on the north side. And that ends, I think it's city property from there on over to, uh, Oak Lake Road. And then on the other side, there's actually a frontage road, people don't recognize it as such. I think it's part of Fairways Parking Lot, but there's a frontage road on the south side of Fairways Parking Lot that goes over and ends at the hotel. If those two frontage roads would be connected with, uh, just a short little piece of bike trail there, that would certainly make it a lot easier to get to, uh, Oak Lake Road for bicyclers coming down either, um, you know, either, from either direction. And a lot safer not having to ride on eighteen.
Normally we would have gone on the bike trail and come back on the Coys Street there, but because of the construction, maybe we would have just gone across the highway, so.
But still, you have that same problem, you have to be on eighteen for a little bit there, so. But if we have a little strip of bike trail on both sides between those two frontage roads, that would fix that problem, I don't think it'd be very hard to do. So someday. But the rest of the trail, the route, uh, looks good, I think that, uh, should work nice. What's the overall distance on that?
Um, I believe it is, if you just go the one direction, you're going twenty-four point six-ish miles, so just double that if you end up coming back.
Okay.
Hope for good weather. No wind.
Okay, well, I'd make a motion to approve the route.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, approve this route, um, any other discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, thank you Amy. Okay, we will move then to agenda item number seventeen, and this is a resolution concerning the budget amendment.
So this, uh, is the item we had the public hearing on, uh, earlier. We have received a, uh, total revenue change, increase of two million seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred forty thousand dollars, the total net change in expenditures of a decrease of eight hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars. Happy to answer any specific questions that are.
Motion to approve adopting the budget amendment.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Rodney, second from Jody, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad. Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don. Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Jenna, item number eighteen is a resolution pertaining to the airport hangar door replacement project.
So we had a public hearing, um, on this item earlier. Um, as mentioned in the engineer's estimate, the proper cost is seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, when we had bid opening on May tenth, uh, we only had one bid. Uh, and it was for the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Funded for this project is provided by DOT grant of up to seventy-five percent of the project cost, or sixty-four thousand dollars and change. And the city's, uh, responsible for the rest of that. Airport commission that, uh, that evening following the bid opening, and their recommendation was, uh, to reject all bids. Um, and then talking with the, uh, airport engineer, the plan would be to, uh, reach out to door companies specifically and then, uh, contractors, uh, to do the specific tasks. They think they can do it at a more affordable rate than, um, what this bid is. So on the agenda, um, the item is a resolution accepting bidding under the contract. Uh, so you have the option of, of awarding the contract, um, as bid to Jensen Builders in the amount of a hundred, a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred. Um, or the alternate would be to approve a motion, uh, rejecting all bids, um, for this. Uh, I will note that, uh, since this project, the, um, estimated cost is less than a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We aren't required to go through competitive bidding, um, like we are on, on street projects, so, this one, we went through the competitive bidding process hoping that, you know, that we would achieve a multiple bid and competitive price. Um, obviously, um, we, we don't think that happened. So because it's under that threshold, we can go out and try to just directly procure these services. Um, so just want to, on future projects when we get asked, why can't we do that? It's because it's under that a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar threshold which, uh, state law, once we get above that, um, we have to do competitive bids.
So the engineers still have confidence in their estimate? They think we should be able to get it for somewhere around that price?
That's what was done a year and a half ago, Harley. Um, from Christmas of twenty twenty to Christmas of twenty-one, um, steel prices went up over six hundred percent. So, no, I don't think we're, we're going to get it done for the seventy-five thousand dollars just because of the price of steel. Uh, the engineer is also going back to the state since prices have gone up immensely to see if they will give us a little more in grand dollars. That doesn't usually happen, but we're kind of in unusual times right now.
So it doesn't affect our grant though if we go just because of the hundred and thirty-nine threshold? I mean, it doesn't affect the state.
No, we'll still be able to use that whether we part the project out to different contractors.
Parted out or not, okay.
And that was for sixty-five.
The sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars is what the DOT grant was for.
Is, is it possible that we'll get repairing versus replacing?
It's a shock. Um, it'll make it another year or so, but we thought since we can get DOT dollars to pay for seventy-five percent of that, let's do it now. But now prices have gone just really crazy, so, um, like I said, we're going to try and part it out, try and get more money from the DOT. If we can't do it this year, we'll have to reapply for DOT funds again and hopefully get a higher loan. Yeah, if inflation slows down a bit.
And so this is the, the hangar door on the, um, airport manager shop, so like where the mechanic, you know, all that work is, so it's a, yeah, very heavily used door.
Move to reject all bids.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Don, second from Tyler to reject all bids, any other discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We'll hope for good news in the near future then, so. Jenna, item number nineteen, um, is to approve a pay application.
This is for the, uh, North McCoy Phillips Street, Call Street Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. Matt Cole with, uh, Boltman Inc., um, is here, so Matt, you want to come up and speak on the item? If you have any questions about the project too, this is also probably the best time to, here.
Thank you, Jacob, with the council. Um, yeah, in fact, you can find this, number one, for the one week they did work in the month of April, uh, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Um, obviously, we still have the four point one million to go, um, as the entire project, but, uh, the project is moving along, uh, pretty well on McCoy Street. Uh, got the water maintenance in all of phase one and the majority of the sanitary maintenance. Um, are waiting on storm structures, uh, to start storm sewer work in phase one, so they are going to continue water main north. Uh, Maple Street is currently closed, Maple Depot Flare is currently closed. Um, we're going to be closing Mountain Street down potentially, uh, later this week, um, leaving access to Emerald's and Eastland Hill Plaza off the highway, um, until probably next week. But there will be, uh, traffic closure in the north two blocks, uh, coming up very soon, and we will have traffic control in place to notify people where to go for business access, and we'll keep, uh, Maple or Mountain Street open at all times. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Motion to approve pay application.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Jody, uh, any discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Jenna, item number twenty, this is to set a public hearing.
Um, this is to, uh, set a public hearing on a, um, amendment to the zoning code by adding a special exception to the, uh, residential, single-family and residential multifamily, RS and RM zoning districts, uh, to provide for a landscape shed, um, which would be a, uh, structure of, uh, not more than a hundred and twenty square feet without utilities connected to it. Since this is zoning change, we have to have the public hearing, uh, on it. The, uh, issue arose earlier this year with the forward adjustment question on, um, currently right now, like a, like a small shed's considered accessory, uh, building. Um, and by definition, you can't have an accessory building without a primary structure. Um, so when there's a vacant lot, if you want to have a small shed on there, you, you can't because there's not a, a primary structure or a primary use, uh, to allow for that. Um, so this special exception, which you would have to report an adjustment on, would allow for essentially an accessory structure on a vacant lot in the RS or RM districts. Uh, so it's, uh, recommended that we set the public hearing for the next council meeting on June sixth, um, at five P M.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion from Jody, second from Tyler to set this, uh, public hearing, uh, next council meeting, June the sixth, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We'll move then to agenda item number, uh, sixteen at this time. If I'm doing things right, is that correct? Move that one up?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so this is the ordinance pertaining to RAG-BRAID. Okay.
Chapter, uh, five eighteen of the city code is a, uh, section just dedicated to RAG-BRAID. And so in the years past, we've just amended it, um, for the relevant event coming up. Um, so we have meant three different sections of that chapter. Um, the first one is just, uh, getting the dates corrected, um, that'll be in July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Um, kind of the, uh, big one, uh, would be the, um, vendor rates, um, what those are proposed to be. As you can see there, and then what the, um, utility and cleaning, uh, fees would be as well. So with that, I'll kind of open it up for, for discussion, if you're ready to add anything for, to it as kind of a leading up the RAG-BRAID committee.
Uh, we're just, yeah, discussed those, uh, those rates for, you know, local nonprofit, and local profit, just, I think there were some suggestions of other amounts there and didn't know if, uh, council had any other thoughts along those lines.
Reading the, this five eighteen, those looked awfully expensive for, especially not nonprofits, so I like the new set of figures much better, I think they're far more workable. But also note that you're going to have to be changing dates too, because I know the second paragraph in that had, uh, the date of the last time they were through, and so that needs to be updated also.
So would you, Harley, like to say what those rates are?
Well, what's being suggested here is a hundred and fifty for nonprofit, or Algonah nonprofit, two hundred and fifty, uh, for profit from Algonah, and then four hundred for out-of-town vendors. Um, like I say, this looked good to me, I believe last time it was more in the order of four hundred and seven hundred, which was really quite high. Um, that's, uh, this looks a lot more sensible.
Okay.
Well, that was also a stayover, so I think that, that made the difference of the rates, where this is just a pasture. So their opportunities aren't as long, a three-hour compared to a overnight.
Yep.
So we definitely look to lower that. But.
With a hundred dollar cleaning deposit and one fifty utility hook-up fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know there's been some discussion on, um, you know, for the nonprofit ones, if we want to look at a lower amount than one fifty. You know, I did provide some of the examples that we can, other towns are doing through pass-throughs, um, I think a couple of them have it at zero or zero for an early bird, then one fifty after that kind of early bird registration, and I think, uh, like vendor, Whittmore is just, uh, fifty for nonprofit.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought we were going maybe more like fifty dollars for nonprofit vendor in Algonah.
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to lowering the nonprofit one.
We're going to have a shorter time span to be a vendor, you know, since we are a pass-through town. It's going to be shorter.
And actually, if people are coming from Emmitsburg, they're going to be traveling through fairly fast because they've got a long ways to go, so yes, it's going to be a short stay.
Is there a dollar amount suggestion then, there?
Was I hearing fifty, is that what somebody was saying?
Yeah, I probably said fifty, you know, in, you know, RAG-BRAID meeting, was I mistaken? It's still higher than that.
Was it fifty and a hundred and fifty? I can't remember.
I thought it was fifty as well, maybe it was a typo.
Yeah, I thought maybe it was typed up.
Fifty and a hundred and fifty for the for-profit even? Because I know we want our Algonah, especially our Algonah businesses to do well.
Yeah.
And we don't want to hurt them in any way not to be able to, but. Maybe that's what it was, fifteen, a hundred and fifty.
I'm certainly not opposed to lowering it.
So, yeah, and the out-of-town, we can.
And then, and then just point clarification on the, on the way the current ordinance is written, if you already have a, like a, you know, business on State Street that.
Yeah.
So you can set up, you know, upfront and basically roll out without having to get a permit under this, this would be for your setting up outside of, of, of your business. So it sounds like we want to change under five eighteen point zero two zero, um, change the fifty dollars to nonprofit vendor, one fifty for a, you know, going to base for-profit vendor, and then four hundred for out-of-town?
Yes. And then the hundred dollar cleaning deposit, one fifty utility hook-up fee, uh, just say the same? Okay?
Because cleaning deposit, they get back if they.
Right, yeah.
We've got to encourage them to clean up, some, put some money to it.
Okay.
We had a hundred for electricity fee, Rodney.
Did we?
Yeah.
Nope, you might remember that better.
So, I'm looking at the form Joanne routed around on Friday the fourteenth, but.
Okay, interesting.
So a hundred dollar clean and a hundred dollar utility hook-up?
It's a cleanup deposit, a hundred electricity fee if planning to use electricity. Is a hundred dollars hook-up electricity, or does that cover our costs? I don't know. Do we need to make it, leave it at a hundred and fifty?
I don't think we can reasonably charge an amount that would cover our actual costs.
Understandable.
Might want to leave it one fifty then.
A lot of the guys might have their own generators or something.
True.
Anyway, so.
Encourage them.
Yeah, bring your own gas generators. Leave it at a hundred and fifty then? Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So with those changes then, Paul, how do we proceed then, just to?
Yeah, I mean, what, what, you know, you're, what you're, what you're doing, something's going to make a motion to, uh, you know, waive the first reading, but then have the, have the ordinance read what Jacob just said. A one would be fifty dollars for nonprofit, one fifty for the for-profit in A two, and then that was it, right, I mean, nothing else is.
Yeah, nothing else has changed.
Nothing else has changed, right, okay.
So, yeah, it would just be those two amendments to what is in front of the council right now, that, that would be the ordinance that you would be voting on.
Okay. Yep, just wanted to clarify that and make sure, yeah, so, okay.
Okay, with that understood, have we waived the first reading?
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Brad, to waive the first reading, any other discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to approve the first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the first reading, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to waive the second and third readings.
I'll second.
We have a motion to, uh, and a second to waive the second and the third readings. Roll call Deb. Roll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to approve the second, third readings.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Brad, to approve the second and third readings. Roll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion from Harley, second from Brad, to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we will move then to agenda item number twenty-two, which pertains to street closures for RagBri.
So this is what I understand, I think that's as close as I can get for how the RagBri committee would like to have the streets set up downtown with yellow and orange representing the street closures. I think one item that we'll kind of have to just wait and see is whether or not, how the impact of the Call Moore Street parking lot. There is a chance that it'll still be open by the time RagBri gets here, but we're just operating on the assumption at that point that demolition will have started. So, you know, we can kind of assume that that will be out of commission. You know, in that case, you could extend, you know, up on more of that entire block because, you know, the parking lot's out of commission. And then if you'd want to leave access then on, to this parking lot down here, or just completely block that off and remain it closed, or just have it open very early so downtown businesses there, you know, can get their vehicles in there, and they stay there until, you know, they, they go to leave after RagBri that has passed. It's going to be a short time, but we will be, you know, if we close this parking lot, and this one's already down for reconstruction, I mean, we're going to be knocking out a significant portion of our parking that, that day. But we basically have them coming down Dodge, turning on State, and then turning back south on Harlan to continue on McGregor.
Can I add something, Jacob? We also do have the Millan Overlake project, which is Harlan and Nebraska from Moore to Jones, and Jones as well. Maybe we can, obviously talk to the contractor and try and then to avoid that area until after RagBri, but we don't, we're going to ask next week for that project.
Yeah, that's when we bid that project, and we're not worried yet. Otherwise, we would, like, we have founders staying there. It's like, hey, when that's going on, you got to make sure things are ready to go. So when we have a meeting with them, we'll just negotiate that. There's plenty of work to do with that project, so hopefully they can find somewhere else occupied.
Can I also add one suggestion?
Sure.
On McGregor, the main route they're going to be on, there's going to be a lot of traffic turning to head downtown. I mean, not everyone's going to, but I think it would be wise to shut down westbound traffic on McGregor at Jones. So, and force them, force all westbound for the four-hour time, because they're going to be going on, they're going to be turning off, that's going to be a lot of traffic. And if we can just shut down the traffic at Jones and force them, that are going west, and force them to go north, we would eliminate that, they could go around on Call Street, avoid the bikes, and then that's going to make the traffic going back and forth a lot easier. I mean, westbound coming into town, cars can be in that with them most of the time. It's very rare, they're trying, they, the motors try and stay out of it as well. So I don't think we have to do anything with, obviously, the bikes are all going to be going east, but some are, a lot of them are going to be turning to go downtown, and then turning back on to get back on the route.
True.
And if we can shut down westbound, I think that can save for a lot of problems with people and bikes and cars.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, good, yeah, good suggestion. Vote. Any other discussion there?
How do you shut down McGregor and Jones and let the bikes go through? You just...
You just, we put barricades on the north lane, and we have arrows forced them north. You just pretty much have to say, and then vehicles that are on Jones, just are going to, they'll see the sign that they're not allowed to turn. Either have to go straight, have to go straight south on Jones, or they can turn and go east with the bikes. That would be their other option. I mean, they're not going to want to do that, but...
And then that would be Thornton that they, that you'd let them back on at if they came around?
They could do Thornton, but they'd probably go down Hall. I mean, that would be the easiest. They, you know, they'd go up north on Jones, get on one-sixty-nine at Jones for a block, then head west on Call Street, and, you know, then come back south on Hall would be the most realistic for car...
Yep.
Yeah.
During that time, again, most motors are going to stay out of the way. They don't, they don't want to be a part of it, especially in the heart of that time.
So if we approve this tonight, we, we, could we add then the closure of...
Yeah, we could, you know, approve as proposed, including, you know, as recommended.
Yeah.
But chief of police, yeah. Can we, can we put up a temporary detour sign or something like that that routes them to Hall then, or...
Uh, I guess you could, I mean, most of the people that are going to be on are going to be locals, are going to understand to go around, you know, what they can do. And the one positive about this whole thing, this is a, the heart of, for us, is a three to four-hour event. So this isn't, you know, we're not detouring for, you know, such a long period of time that it's going to mess with so much traffic.
Well, it doesn't show up on the street closure list. I believe we discussed about placing an officer at Hall McGregor.
Yes, I, uh, normally, I, when it was an overnight, that was one of our spots, because that's where most people know that they can cross. So the last, while I've been around for three of them, we've always had an officer at Hall, Hall McGregor, to help cars pass through.
You can also put an alert out on the dealer system to telling people within the city that westbound McGregor traffic will be detoured at Jones to Hall Street, or to Call Street over Hall, but, yeah.
I think it sounds good. I'd make a motion to approve the route and the street closure with the addition of the closing. The police, police, chief of police recommendation, street closure.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Don. Any other discussion? Three and a roll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-three, this is the second notice of a future appointment for the board of adjustment. And again, this is to replace Mike Denny. I just want to take this opportunity to thank him for his work and involvement in that board of adjustment. And again, this is, yeah, just the second notice there, so... And agenda item number twenty-four is also the second notice of a future appointment to the retail revolving loan fund committee to replace Sandra Batt. And I, I want to thank Sandy at this time also for her work and involvement in the revolving loan fund committee. So that brings us to the end of our published agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and it's five fifty-eight P.M.
So move.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.